All right, favor. So now we will enter into public comment. And I would just like to read briefly the board policy considering public comment, number 1230. The Board of Education encourages public participation on school-related matters at regular meetings of the Board. To allow public participation in open session of 10 minutes at the beginning and 10 minutes at the end would be held at regular meetings of the Board. The meeting agenda will indicate when the open session is being held during any regular meeting of the Board. Any group or organization wishing to address the Board must identify the single spokesperson. During open sessions, presentation should be as brief as possible. Speakers may comment on any school-related matter during the open session. However, speakers presenting complaints must first go through the established complaint procedures. The Board reserves the right to delay action for later meetings. The Board will not permit in public session discussion involving individual district personnel or students. Persons wishing to discuss matters involving individual district personnel or students should present their comments and/or concerns to the superintendent during regular business hours. All speakers are to conduct themselves in a civil manner. Obscene language, libelous statements, threats of violence, statements advocating racial religions or other forms of prejudice will not be tolerated. The President shall be responsible for the orderly conduct of meeting and shall rule on such matters as the time to be allowed for public discussion and the appropriateness of this subject being presented. The President shall have the right to discontinue any presentation which violates this policy. That being said, I would ask as we enter into public session that we keep our comments brief, two to three minutes, so that all who wish to speak have the opportunity to do so. And be mindful that the discussion is to be civil and addressed to the Board. It's in its entirety, no personal comments to Board members will be acceptable. Anyone wishing to speak may join us.
Thank you, President. Miles Moody, Agnew Road, Washingtonville. First, as you're aware, the retirees were inadvertently switched from Plan A to Plan B as of January 1. Subsequent to be returned to Plan A, several people have asked me about repayment or payment corrections for medications they purchased during the Plan B period. Since the errors were not the fault of the retirees and since Excellis is capable of tracking all such transactions, what can be done to have all the payment corrections made automatically by Excellis without those individuals impacted going through the normal and to some confusing payment correctional procedures? And I know we have limited time, so you don't have to answer that now. I just want to set it up. Next, the retirees received new insurance cards dated January 1, 2014. I assume for when we were converted to Plan B. Yesterday, we received the new insurance cards dated 2013. I assume to return us to Plan A. As usual, there was no accompanying paperwork explaining the cards or their usage. I have had two calls asking which card to use, the confusion being the dates. And as of an hour and a half ago, one person calls in, "I got the 2013 card, saw the 2014. 2014 is newer than 2013. I shredded the 2013 card." And I assume those are the ones that are supposed to be back on. So I am requesting an informational letter be sent to all the affected cardholders to clarify the situation, containing instructions, which card to use, and what to do if they have already destroyed their replacement cards.
Well, I would say that you'll be in contact again with Excellis directed by those issues. And if retirees have issues, they could either call our office, or more formally, they could call Excellis as well.
That's part of my next thing. A lot of our retirees have no idea or no clue who to contact for help. And my complaint is, I'm acting as an insurance consultant. I don't want to be a concerned insurance consultant. I don't know how to be an insurance consultant. The third thing, the person contacted me, they went to pick up a prescription back when they were on Plan B, and discovered it was going to cost them $300. We did a little bit of research, and we believe this is because of the step therapy component in Plan B. This person said, "Well, I've already gone through all the generic herb drugs. I had adverse reactions to them. It took several months before they were regulated, and really didn't want to repeat the process." And I didn't know what to advise them in that there should be a way to go past this if we're put on Plan B. This just kind of points out some of the complications that are going to come for our people, the retirees, if they're put on Plan B.
That certainly sounds like, and I'm not going to be able to discuss everything that's brought to our attention tonight, that certainly sounds like an issue. I don't think that's an issue related to Plan Two, because the Plan Two, it would either be, at the pharmacy, it would give you 5, 15, or 30, or that prescription would have been doubled, double those numbers, 10, 30, or 60. So to have a $300 bill for a prescription, would it be a Plan Two prescription?
Yeah, it was.
I think what may be occurring is that there are certain drugs that require prior authorization. And so if you have not had that prior authorization, then that could be what could be occurring.
The step therapy says you have to go through the generics first.
So that's why, that's why it may be. So I mean, I think that was part of the reason why Mr. Lozey also mentioned that if the Board was to make a switch, that it would be the very next day. It requires some time. It will sort of hang up that after, not only for the individual, but also for Excellis. I would imagine it requires some subsidies to be looked at.
I'll take my questions.
Well, I think that we need to first of all apologize to the retirees for this happening to be in. And second of all, I asked for the representative from Excellis to be here to apologize to these people, and she's not here. So I have to help me.
And sorry, those little things. At least our retirees are stable where they are on Plan A. If they are allowed to stay on Plan A, we won't be going through these complications. Last few thoughts. If the Beakman Town retirees are placed in Plan B, statistically, as a group, the Beakman Town retirees would have greater out-of-pocket expenses than any other group in Plan B, since the other groups are active members, younger, healthier. Statistically, as a group, if the Beakman Town retirees are placed in Plan B, they would have greater out-of-pocket expenses than any other group in Plan A, since they're now facing the new deductibles, et cetera. So in conclusion, statistically, as a group, the Beakman Town retirees would have greater out-of-pocket expenses than any other group in the consortium. And my question is, does the Board really want to do this? Thank you. Would you mind if I have David Walters speak next to you?
I'll sit. You have a guest though. Can I sit? This is an interesting experience to do this for the second time at seven years of age. If someone had asked me when I retired, if I was going to be ever standing in front of the Board or sitting in front of the Board of Education, I would have said, "No way." But unfortunately, we're here, and we're here now. I'm going to give you a little bit of background, and I'm going to tell you a story having to do with me. I have had multiple sclerosis for 35 years. It's gone through the normal, eh, there's no normal, everybody's a different case. I'm going to call it the normal course of the disease. You start out having a little bit of trouble, it remits, then you get, over a period of time, what happens? Your health starts to go down. In my case, it's been primarily walking. I have no memory anymore at all. And you lose, you're tired, just absolutely exhausted all the time. But what I was able to do a few years ago, because I go to Burlington to see a neurologist, unfortunately passed away about a year ago, I was able to get involved with a drug study for a brand-new drug called Ampira. Ampira gave me the opportunity to walk reasonably normally. Without Ampira, I was told by my neurologist the other day, in about four to five days, I'm good, I guess I could extrapolate or push this thing out a little bit more than she did, but in about four or five days, I might be on my hands and knees. Something I wasn't looking forward to. But lo and behold, it was something I might end up having to look forward to. Between Christmas and New Year's, I got a call from Acorda Pharmaceuticals, like I always used to, and telling me that it's time to order your monthly supply of Ampira, call us when you can. So I called them, you know, right away, and set it up for a delivery just after the first of the year. Well, lo and behold, the day that the delivery was supposed to occur, came nothing. It's the first time I've ever had nothing. No box outside of my door, no call, no letter, no anything. And so I said, "Well, we've got a little bit of a problem here." So I came to the meeting that was held here, and then I went home the next day, and I started to try to figure out what's going on. So I start by calling Blue Cross or Excellis. "Well, there's been a hold on all your drugs, and all this and all that, and something else. We can't help you." Thank you. I called Arity another place. I called my neurologist. I said, "Theoretically, I'm supposed to get prior approval. Can you do that?" "Yeah, I can do that." I called somebody else. Finally, I called Acorda. "Well, we've been told we can't fill any of these prescriptions. They're this, that, or something else." Then I called Mr. Mannix, and he assured me he would get on the phone and do whatever. I think it took me about four calls to finally get to him. But he was very cooperative, he was kind. I really don't have a bad thing to say about him and the situation at all. But I do have a bad thing to say about the procedure. Yes, I got my medication the following Monday. I was only walking on one leg at that point instead of on my hands and knees. But this is the problem that we have right now. You're asking old people like me to make the change, to do something that, yeah, it might save you a couple of bucks, but it's going to hang me out to dry. I have about 13 prescriptions, two of which are very expensive. The Ampira is number one. I also have a pump in my abdomen that pumps another drug into my spine that allows me to also walk. The Ampira gives me the strength, the back of thing gives me the mobility, the looseness in my legs. Both of those are extremely expensive. If it turns out that somehow I get hung out to dry, and I've calculated at about $8,000 a year, this would end up costing me, if I had to in some way pick up the copay, that's an awful lot of money. I'm not wealthy by any stretch of anybody's imagination, although I probably am probably one of the highest-paid people if you had to retire. But if this is what's happening to me, what's happening to somebody who retired at 35 years ago or something like that, with a final average salary of $17,000, and maybe not even the kind of coverage that Medicare or Medicaid gives them today, these people put it forward to pick up any of the kind of money you're talking about in terms of percentages of drug costs and whatever. It just seems to me, and I may be wrong, the most sensible thing to do would be to allow the people who have already retired and retired with the guarantee that we were going to have Plan One, or Plan A, or Plan whatever, and then pick up whatever it is you tend to want to have happen with Plan B, or Plan Two, or whatever you're calling it, with people who retire in the future. In fact, even the press republicans said that in an editorial. What you got when you retired, or what you had when you retired, or what you were granted when you retired is what you ought to keep. And I agree with that. And I would imagine most of the people in the audience would agree with that. And thank you.
Good evening. I certainly know an awful lot of you, and I thank you for listening to us, and I hope that you do hear what we're trying to say. We are Beakman Town. I could bore you to death for a few minutes. No, a few seconds. I was a student here. My father was president of the Board. My mother spent 37 years teaching here. Out of my seven sisters, five of us graduated from here, including me. I taught here for 34 years and loved it. I was a teacher, a counselor, and an administrator in this district. And in 34 years of working here, we had great financial times, we had eh, financial times. And during those great financial times, it was us who were the proponents of the new programs and fought to get the best education to the students in Beakman Town that we could. We were the people who fought to ensure that the programs were developed for our kids, our Beakman Town students. And in bad times, like the last few years, I think things are getting a bit better, we also were the ones who fought to endure the cutbacks in the '70s. Some of you weren't even with us yet. We had over 70 people cut in a couple of years from this district. It was devastating. What we fought to ensure that the students, we did, of this district received the best education they could. We also endured austerity budgets. Talk to some of these people about what fun that was. And I know I'm supposed to be addressing you, but guys, remember collecting for supplies, for tests? We did that. We helped the kids. A lot of us paid out of our pockets because we had kids that couldn't. I'm trying to give you a background of why there's such emotion here over this issue. We also fought, and we were active. We were people of the '50s, '60s, and '70s. Not age, years. We were fighters verbally. We fought. We went to our state representatives, and we endured their cuts, and we battled with them. And we went to our federal representatives, and we endured their cuts, and we battled with them. So the students in this district, your relatives, your parents, God forbid, I've probably taught some of your grandparents, so they got the best education we could give them. But you know what? No matter what went on, and no matter how bad times we were, we never, we never expected to have our elderly, our retirees, pay for the programs and the educations of the students. Never. And neither did the present members of the Beakman Town Teachers Association. We retirees worked 20, 30, some of us 40 years at BCS. And in those years, we negotiated multiple contracts, and we gave up monetary settlements, and we gave up benefits that even some of the other public school districts had in order to ensure that we had this health insurance when we retired. Plan B is not equal to Plan A. The Beakman Town School District promised us Plan A when we retired. You are now the Beakman Town School District. It is wrong not to keep your word. It's the wrong way to go. We too are taxpayers. Many, many of us, and lots of our families, live in this district. We retirees still pay our fair share to educate children, no matter what district we live in. We should not be expected to pay even more by changing our health plan from Plan A to Plan B, which will cost, we retirees, the elderly, hate that word, that's where I am, significantly more and not provide the same service. So we're asking you not to operate with a slash-and-burn mentality, but to think, work, act proactively to solve this problem. We help some of you to learn to think and take positive action. Get natural gas in our district. After working on the town board, what we were told against estimates and estimates, but that it could save this district $400,000 a year. Thank God that in the last few months, you, the school board, and thank you, Mr. Mannix, for finally leading the way to get the letter of commitment, and I'm not going to bore these people, they don't know what I'm talking about, so that NICE could proceed with its studies to get natural gas to the Beakman Town Central School and its Cumberland Head Building. Also, go after our state and federal representatives. We need more aid. The wars are slowing down and almost ended, thank God. And you all know about guns and butter. It's time for butter. It's time to support, that's an old economics phrase, it's time to support education in this country, in this state, in this county, and in this school district. We also know we've got to eliminate unfunded mandates. We all need to work to do that. These are proactive things. And we need to push seriously this state to study the effect of the 2% cap on all government spending. It really needs some tweaking. It's beginning to hurt lots of entities. In closing, a very positive discussion occurred with Mr. Mannix, and thank you, Mr. Mannix, for that, with some retirees yesterday. He asked us to consider working together to help find solutions to the problems the district faces. Mr. Mannix and we three retirees agreed that opening communication between retirees and the district on a regular basis, I repeat, communicating, we did not know this was coming, that communicating is what will help us to work out solutions to the district's problems. We retirees believe there are solutions other than increasing healthcare costs for the elderly, the retirees, the most vulnerable, who are on fixed income. Leave us on Plan A, and let's talk. Thank you.
I'll say to Holly, "Respect your elders, Holly." I taught at Holly. Gary Van Corp, taxpayer for over 40 years, teacher for over 33 years. One good thing about being one of the last speakers for a particular position is that everybody else has probably said what you're going to say. I do believe that Sid stole my notes, because I don't need to say that, or that, or that. I do want to say that I was not able to be at the last forum, and therefore did not have an opportunity to speak or listen. I understand it got a little exciting at times, but that happens when an emotional issue gets put out in front of folks. I sent a letter, and I do realize that it was fairly extensive, and unfortunately, being a social studies teacher, it's part of the curse. It's very difficult to be brief. They told me I had three minutes. I said, "I can't stay hollow in three minutes." So since Sid has already said most of what I was going to say, I would like to reiterate. In that letter, I pointed out that there were really three main problems that are causing the situation right now. One is the extremely high cost for medical care. When you have a pharmaceutical company that can charge 10 times for one generic prescription, and a few months later, the pharmacist gets charged 10 times the amount for the same drug, and that is unchecked, and you can, this can happen, there's nobody who can say, "Oh, you're gouging the public." That's an issue. That's a problem, and it gets reflected into the cost of the insurance that pays for it. And this goes on and on and on. This needs to be addressed. Sid mentioned the unfunded or underfunded mandates. That's absolutely true, and that has been going on. Notice, the retirees are not the cause of the high rise of medical care. The retirees are not the cause of the underfunded or unfunded mandates. There's the tax cap. It was a political way of putting the people who are concerned about taxes and saying, "Here, we'll fix this." What has crippling effects, crippling effects on schools, crippling effects on municipalities, and it needs to be changed. The retirees didn't do this. Sid addressed the fact that we, for years, worked here, and I can tell you, in the 1970s, we had double-digit inflation. I realize that some people have had a salary freeze. That's not fun, I know it. I'm on a pension. I haven't been getting big increases. I finally got a $15 a month increase in my pension, and the first time I got my tooth filled, it was gone the whole month, the whole year. I understand that. I understand, too, in the '70s, we went through the double-digit inflation, so I lost buying power. We got 6% raises, and it was 18% inflation, and it took me decades before I caught up to what I had before. I understand that. Sid already addressed the budgets. I understand that. We've had worse. We had budgets that were voted in parts, folks, in parts. And so it was transportation, and it was, it was the sports, and it was library, and equipment, and so on and so forth. And folks voted it down because they realized that their taxes were what they thought were too high. Kindergarten kids were forced to walk a mile and a half. High school kids, three and a half miles to school, or their parents deliver. It was not good times. We'd been there. I understand that. But you ride it through, you work together, and you find solutions. You don't, and we never, as Sid said, we never took it out of the retirees. Never. And we spent years at lower salaries in some of our neighboring schools, so that we would have those health benefits, and we would make sure the retirees had the health benefits. I'm talking tens of thousands of dollars for me alone. Multiply that on the retirees, and that's how much we saved the district over 30 or 40 years to get that insurance. I just want you to realize, we understand the situation. We've been there, we understand, we've done this. We've also have campaigned. We have gone and we have worked, as Sid said. I don't think there's anybody in this room that hasn't worked harder than we did to maintain program and build the school to what it became. And I am one of those. I am one of those. And I don't deserve to now, where I should be able to kind of take it easy as I'm creeping up to the '70, the Big 70. I shouldn't have to be. up to the 70, the Big 70, I shouldn't have to be worried and waking up in the middle of the night wondering, if I'm the next guy to get the heart attack or need that, am I going to be able to afford the prescriptions? Or am I going to be able to go through all this stuff? I, I earn not having to worry about that. I earn being able to relax a little bit. It's, it's not the proper thing to do, folks. I also agree that we had an extremely positive conversation as individuals with Mr. Mannix the other day. I do believe we can work together. And I understand some of the things that I'm saying are, sound like they're insurmountable. How can you take on the federal government and get them to react? How can you take on the state government and get them to give you the proper aid and relieve the crunch? Because you work together to do it, but you don't give up. I had a job, I was taking college courses, I had two kids, I was in civic organizations, I was doing Boy Scouts, all those things that people do, and I still pushed. But again, we were teed in the 1950s and 60s, folks. If it wasn't for us, we'd still be in Vietnam. We'd still be having segregated counters where blacks sit in one and whites at the other. Women still wouldn't be able to have the right to, to buy a car unless it was cosigned by their father or their husband. These are some of the changes that came through in the 60s, and it's because of our determination. Some were out in the streets driving, others were working hard to, to bring about these changes that have bettered us all. So we understand that it's not easy, but we're not looking for easy right now. We're looking to, to improve the situation of the schools and not have the retirees be the ones who pay for that. And I pledge that I will continue to work as I have been, to work for the schools. And in my letter, I say it to you, I have voted for every school budget, every bus, every program. I have gone to Albany and lobbied, I have signed petitions, I have become involved in the political process. I'm not one to say you do it, I've done it, let's all do it, and I would love to be able to sit down without the threat of losing my health benefits or having them decreased and having to go through the rigmarole of going through all those steps that we already have done. I would love to sit down and work together to achieve what we all want, and that is an excellent education for our kids, and they're now my grandchildren that live in this district, for our kids, and we can do that together. But I do not want to, I don't want to, be fighting amongst ourselves to protect ourselves. We need to work together, and I'm willing to do that. And Mr. Mannix has already started that process. I commend him for going to the consortium, I commend him for coming up for ideas. We are not in the same exact spot yet, but we can work together to get there, but you gotta give us an opportunity, you gotta give us a chance, otherwise, it's not going to be pretty. That's all I can say, it won't be pretty. I choose to work together and go forward. Thank you very much for your time.
That's okay. I probably really don't mean that. You can comment. On December 10th, the board held an open forum on the possibility of changing retirees to Plan B. Most of you guys were there. The board indicated that the retirees would be made whole with respect to deductibles and maximum out-of-pocket expenses. Some folks stood up and politely said their piece, while others were disrespectful, and for them, I apologize. Retiree after retiree explained their disapproval of the move. They said that Plan B is not what they were promised decades ago. They said they will promise Plan A for the rest of their life. It was very disappointing to me that after 90 minutes of public comment, not one person talked about the promises that were made to the children of this district. Where are their advocates? And other than Sid and Gary, just now, that's the first I've heard. Aren't they the reason why this school exists, why employees have jobs, why retirees have pensions and healthcare? The kids were left out of the discussion entirely. In order to fulfill our promise to our kids, we need to have a school that stands on solid financial ground. Since 2009, looking at the audits, the post-employment benefits of our district, post-employment benefits are paid after employees retire. It's composed largely of retiree healthcare liability. It exploded from $72 million in 2009 to $105 million in 2013. This is a 45% increase in four years. Since there are no accounts in which to set aside monies to cover this massive liability, we must pay as we go. And unfortunately, no amount of lobbying Albany or the federal government will take, will fix this. This is liability for current and future retirees. Additionally, the school's balance sheet, otherwise known as net assets, is in the red for the second straight year, largely due to this liability I learned from Michael Boris, the audit, the auditor presented at the board meeting. There aren't many businesses that could stay afloat given the same financial stress, and our school is no exception. The solvency and sustainability of our school is being threatened. We need to acknowledge that and begin fixing our financial problems, or we all lose, all of us, and our kids will be the biggest casualty. How we fix these problems is up to the board and the superintendent. They have solicited input from the public. There are many options for offering HRA to prescription caps, to phasing out Plan A based upon retirement date, and even allowing individuals to pay the difference in premium cost to keep Plan A. I suggest we all start thinking about compromise, or we all lose. Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Marilyn Dwyer. Two children have graduated, and I'm a current district resident. First of all, I would like to say that I truly have respect for all of our retirees and our current employees, but the reality is, we have a crisis looming, and it needs to be addressed. I feel badly that we have retirees sitting in this situation, but I also feel badly that we have children that are losing programs, and we have young teachers that have lost jobs, and, and current graduates that can't find a job because the money is so bad. It just seems to me that somewhere along the line, the train left the track. Years ago, for decades, many of these people sitting in this audience did give up salary increases, they did sacrifice, they did do things to help the district. And I think as a result, yes, they were promised this lifelong benefit. Somewhere along the line, that benefit continued to be promised, but the people were not sacrificing like many of these in the audience did. And I think that that has resulted in the problem we have now. If you look at benefits anywhere, any type of free lifelong family health insurance is unheard of. The Plan B health insurance plan is superior compared to most other health insurance plans currently offered in our area. I worked in benefits administration in field in the 1980s, and I can tell you that Plan B equivalent insurance plans were being introduced as the new norm to employees back then. The fact that we have maintained Plan A for as many years as we have is part of the reason we face the current situation. I don't mean necessarily for the retirees, but in general, for our employee groups. Plan A is an unheard-of insurance plan and has been outdated for many years. And I find it really interesting that we continue to offer a plan that was normal in the 1980s with salaries that are the norm for 2014. So I have to ask the question, if we continue to do this, then exactly when are we going to fix this? Because it's obvious that we can't keep doing this, we're already in trouble. I would support a change of plan in retiree health insurance to Plan B if we could look at some of the situations and make sure that there would not be any enormously adverse effects for anyone. I do appreciate Dr. Walter, what you've been through, but I can tell you, I personally know people who do not have this type of health insurance, who do not get that medication. So they live in our district, and I do feel that we have many people in our district, be it farmers, self-employed people, people that work for other companies, that are struggling with healthcare costs, they do not have this type of insurance, and they are forced to take money out of their own pockets to pay for things. The district's main goal, in my opinion, should be to provide the very best, up-to-date education it can to the students. As a parent of two Beakman Town graduates recently, 2010 and 2013, I can tell you that we are sending our children off to colleges not as prepared as their students that they're going to school with. They are surviving, but they are missing some things. And so I don't feel that our education system is huge, overblown, and they're getting more than they need, et cetera. I think we really lack, and we have to offer more things to our student to make them productive citizens. I guess sometimes I, I agree, we all should work together, but I think it takes more than just the board and Mr. Mannix and the retirees, I think our community needs to be involved as well. I think we have many people in our community that are willing to help. Nobody wants to see anybody suffer or things taken away from anybody. I have elderly parents, I have elderly relatives, I, I can sympathize with that. But I just ask if we can all look at what other people are facing who don't have this Plan Health, Plan A health insurance. These people have worked for many years, 20 years, 30 years, 40 years, 50 years, these people have put away for their retirement, they don't have a pension, but you know what? They're pulling out of that because now they're having to pay higher taxes. It's a problem, but it's not this board's problem, it's not even the probably two, previous two or three boards' problems, it's a lifelong problem that went back. Somewhere along the line, somebody didn't plan, somebody didn't look and say, what are we offering, are we going to sustain this? We can't. I'm willing to serve, I have a benefits background, I'm a community member, I would serve on a committee, I would love to work with retirees. Many of these people, some of them are here, taught me as well, I'm a graduate of this school district. I just think that it's really sad at this point, once again, we're a we and a them and a the community against the retirees, or the community against the employees, or whatever, it's just, we make our children work together. We have something called Eagle Pride, we, they work together, they're forced to work together. When are the adults in this district going to sit down and work together to solve the problems? Thank you.
Thank you. I'm David Tretzer, 119 Road, Morrisonville. I moved to the district in 1979, so I'm relatively new to the district in the eyes of many. From 1995 to 2003, I was a board member, being as VP and president, so I do understand and appreciate some of the problems, the problem that the board is facing at this Now, if I was on the board now, I would ask the superintendent and the business manager for some information. Number one, I would ask the board to, to look at the list of people who are near retirement, a year, two, three, four away, and talk to them, and see if, by going to Plan B for the health insurance, will they now reconsider their plan to retire and extend their employment another two, three, four, five years, knowing it's going to cost them more to pay for their health insurance? If they do that, that's going to cost the district more money. It may well eat up the savings that is going to be, thought of as going to be a complaint in B. I'd also ask the superintendent to talk to some of the retirees, and so I've spoken tonight, to see what, you know, what their situations are. Dr. Walter has an extreme situation, others not so extreme, but they all have certain issues that, once they have to start, you know, paying more money for their health insurance or their meds, it's going to really cause a problem. I understand what Ms. Dwyer said, there are people in the area who don't have the same insurance. And I addressed this when I was, when I was younger. If a person wanted to be rich, they would have attended college, become a teacher, and become rich, and they would then have these benefits. If the people can't afford, if they can't afford their insurance, I don't know. Are they professionals? I'm not, I'm not knocking anyone, but you have to compare apples to apples. I'd ask the superintendent to get information from the southern-tier districts, the Crown Points, the Scrum Lake, the Ties. Those districts have already changed the Plan B for their actives. Has any of those gone to Plan B for their retirees? I'm not sure, but I don't think so. So why, why did those districts go to Plan B for the actives, but not the retirees? There must be a reason. I'd want the superintendent to get that information to me if I were an active board. I just, I won't be long, just a brief history, not a, not a history, a bricks-and-mortar history, but a history of the district, Beakman Town Central School. Again, I've been here since 79, so relatively new, I know some of you attended the school here, I know some of you are relatively new to the district, maybe you haven't been here 79, 10, 12, 15 years, I'm not sure, but that's new. You may not understand the history of this district. Now, the history of this district includes the administrators, superintendents, teachers, some working 25, 30, 40 years, teaching hundreds, thousands of students, day in and day out. That's the history of Beakman Town Central School. That's the heart and soul. Let's think about the cafeteria staff. I mean, how many meals did, has the cafeteria staff served over the past 50 years, 60 years, to thousands and thousands of students? That's the history of Beakman Town, that's the heart and soul of this district. How about the bus drivers? There's no way to tell how many miles those bus drivers have driven their children safely to and from home and school. There's no way to tell. That's the history of Beakman Town. The bus mechanics, they keep these buses running, mile after mile after mile, and that's the history of Beakman Town Central School. How about the clerical staff? How many calls have they answered? How many problems have they solved right at the office without going back to the principal or someplace else? How about the, the custodians? How many rooms have the custodians cleaned over the past 50 years? How many broken bottles? How many piles of vinyl have they cleaned up? That's the heart and soul, that's the history of Beakman Town Central School's history. The maintenance people, they keep this place running. They retired, they keep it, they kept it running, now they're retired. That's the heart and soul of Beakman Town Central School. So, that's the history. And there's more, how dare you forget someone? But that's the history of this district, that's the heart and soul of Beakman Town Central School. Yes, there's money to be saved if you go to Plan B, maybe. Again, maybe. Unless the actives keep working longer and longer because they can't afford to retire because they're going to have to, you know, play, pay Plan B a prices. Now, the current students was mentioned, and I understand that. I understand the current students, I understand all the issues that go with running a school. But let's, just picture this scenario. So you have a student going to visit Grammy and Grandpa, here in the district. Hi Grammy.
Hi sweetie.
What's wrong? You seem sad.
I'm sad.
Why is that Grammy?
Well, I worked at Beakman Town for 37 years, and they just took my insurance, and they just wrecked it, and I can't afford it, it's tough, it's tough.
Oh Grammy, I'm so sorry. Now, where did you work?
I worked at Beakman Town Central School.
She says, that's my school. Hmm, is that going to make that student proud to be a student at Beakman Town Central School after hearing that their Grammy and their Grandpa are suffering now because they were placed on Plan B? I don't think so. One of my grandkids, they'd be upset, they'd be barely upset. Anyhow, in conclusion, the history of Beakman Town Central School, other retirees, that's the heart and soul of this district. So you can rip the heart and soul away from this district by going to Plan B, but it's not going to be pretty, as someone mentioned. It's going to be, it's just not a good thing to do. Let's work together, let's try to sound proud. Let's work together, let's try to solve the problem, find money elsewhere, find other things to do and not put it on the backs of other retirees. Thank you.
Gary Gutz, eleven forty-dollar avenue in town of Fotsburg. I also am a concerned taxpayer ruling in this district. I've been attending the school board meetings for the last several years because of my concern for the way the tax dollars are being spent. Numerous cuts have been made to programs and several teaching positions have had to have been cut in order to keep the school budget within reason. The teachers' union and the support staff just approved to switch their healthcare to Plan B, which will help with the upcoming budgets. I also am retired. My wife and I both retired from the construction union. When we retired, we had to pay for our own healthcare. Nobody picked it up, none of the employers, the union didn't pick it up. Before, my wife was old enough for Medicare, she had a twenty-six-hundred-dollar deductible plus co-pays and a monthly premium of five hundred dollars a month. I wish she would have had Plan B. Now that we are both on Medicare, we pay eight thousand dollars annually for our Part B and our Part B supplement plus Part B drug coverage. We also have many co-pays for our meds on top of that. The point that I am getting at is that the order has informed the board and the taxpayers that the school district is facing an unfunded liability of over a hundred million dollars, most of which comes from health insurance benefits. And that was something that was put up through the years, through the years, nobody ever thought about having to set other money aside. Now, from what I've checked, the state doesn't allow you to put that extra money away to try to make up for all those unfunded liabilities. Asking them to switch to Plan B and include the HRA, to me, is the least that they could You know, everybody, I came to the last meeting, and I'm here at this meeting, and I keep hearing all the retirees saying they took these jobs for the kids. So how come now they're only thinking about themselves and their healthcare? The board can't make any more cuts without earning the education the students are getting. The state ranking for the school is not the best right now, and having to cut more programs and increase class sizes will only make matters worse. Taxpayers can't afford any higher taxes, therefore, I feel the board should try to get together and do, and come up with a reasonable plan. I attended the last meeting when changes to the retiree healthcare was discussed. The way that some of the current teachers and retirees carried on was appalling, and I'd like to apologize to the board for that. One last point, for many years, nobody ever challenged the cost of benefits, but the cost is no longer sustainable. In the private sector, all workers have had to pay more for their healthcare and for their retirement insurance. In fact, my son's insurance, and he's in the union, just went up fourteen percent this year. Thank you.
I'm Richard Levine, taxpayer. I'll try to be brief. I just want to cover two things that haven't been covered tonight, that's process and ethics.
Mr., can you raise the mic?
You can't hear me? Oh my God. That never happens. Okay. I'd like to talk about the staff. The staff gave up over a half a million dollars a year in benefits on the assumption that the retirees wouldn't be affected. Now, why would they have that impression? There's no way, I've been on a sat in the board where you guys sit for seven years, there is no way the unions ever would have agreed to this if you had told them they were going after the retirees. Never would have happened. So, besides talking about Plan B, I want to talk about the ethics of it. So you've got a half a million dollars of statements for the every year from now till forever because the teacher stepped up and took the cut. Four thousand bucks per person in benefits. Do the math, it adds up. And then to sit here and say, well, we're talking about Plan B. No. Where are the ethics of the board? If you tell somebody verbal or written, and I don't care if you say, if people up there say verbal doesn't count, it's called ethics. If you tell people who are negotiating that if they give you something and you tell them, okay, but we won't be allowed to, it's on a group, you shouldn't do it. And all this other stuff is nice, but it doesn't address the issue. The issue is, they never should have been targeted because the only reason you got the cut in the first place was because they thought you weren't going to go after the retirees. So where are the ethics here? Where is the bargaining in good faith? I'll guarantee you, if you walked up to the barngers from the union and said, well, we're going to go after the retirees if you agree to this, they never would have agreed to it. So here's my challenge to you. Does anybody out there think that they weren't, we had, like, seven people come up here from negotiating team and saying they were told that retirees would not be targeted. Seven of them came up at the last meeting. How can you, in good ethical sense, then vote to cut benefits on people who are supposedly off the list? And if you do vote it, I'll tell you right now, as far as I'm concerned, you have no ethics.
My name is Diane Porter, I'm originally Beakman Town, and I've only been here about twenty-five years, so I'm a newcomer also. I actually wasn't planning on addressing the board this evening, I didn't even realize this was a forum until I came in. A lot has been said since I've been here that I've heard, and I realize that promises were made to people over the years, people have worked hard, they've lost their benefits. Unfortunately, that's not something that's just happened here at Beakman Town, that is something that is happening in all school districts, it is happening across the country in all areas of, like, all walks of life. People are losing their jobs, they're losing their benefits. People that have jobs, that do have insurance, come January first, they find out that their insurance has been changed, they now have to pay for more, they're not getting as more. So what I just want to say is that I think that the bottom line is being missed here. And the bottom line is that people can't afford it, they don't have the money. And if Beakman Town wants to be Beakman Town, changes are going to have to be made. And I'm not just saying by taking away retiree's benefits, I'm saying across the board with a lot of things, changes are going to have to be made because people don't have the money. They have put themselves in debt just to even try to pay their own bills. So it is time for everybody to just really work together and look at each other and look at the person sitting next to you and realize, hey, I'm complaining because my insurance isn't that great. And then look at that person next to you and say, oh, wait a minute, they don't have any insurance. So you just really need to look at the bottom line. If we don't fix this and work on this together as a community, there's going to be no Beakman Town school this year.